I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Opens Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The time is now six o'clock. Please join us while Mr. Hubert leads us in the invocation and Mr. Williams in the pledge.
Feel free to join me if you'd like.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day that we have had. We are grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet in this building to discuss the issues of Conroe Independent School District. We ask that Thy Spirit be upon us, that we will have the children's best interests at heart and the students' best interests at heart and our teachers and all those involved with Conroe ISD. We ask that you be with us this day and all those that are with us in this room. We ask these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Hubert, Mr. Williams. Item 2A, Special District Recognition, District Support Staff Ambassador Awards. Dr. Stockton.
We are very excited tonight to recognize some very special people that work in this building. I'm going to ask Dr. Hines come and introduce those recipients.
Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. As you know, the Conroe Independent School District is fortunate to have so many hardworking and dedicated staff members that support our outstanding schools. Tonight, we want to take a brief moment to recognize just a few of those valued members of the CISD team. It is an honor for me to introduce to you the 2017 Ambassador Award recipients for our administrative departments. Each of tonight's recipients exemplifies excellence and provides exceptional service for the district. As I introduce our recipients, if you would please come forward and remain up front until we have all of our recipients up here. And I'm going to begin with, tonight, from Athletics Department, Sandra Richardson. Sandra Richardson has been an administrative assistant for the CISD Athletic Department for the past five years, and during that time, she has worked every aspect of the Athletic Department, from assisting with the management of the departmental budget and making sure the game officials get paid, to ordering supplies and materials and just keeping everything organized. Some of you may know Sandra from attending football games at Morehead Stadium, where she coordinates all the workers for all the football contests at that venue. Sandra handles each of her Athletic Department duties with her always bright and positive personality. She always has a smile on her face, and she always goes above and beyond in all that she does. Next, we have Sandra Vaughn from the Curriculum and Instruction Department. Sandra Vaughn is a person that puts her heart and soul into all that she does. She has worked for CISD for eight years and has supported Response to Intervention, Positive Behavioral Interventions in Support, our CPI, Secondary Language Arts and Languages Other Than English, Advanced Placement, and Special Education. She is amazing at budgets, scheduling, keeping things on track, learning new things, and working to maintain all other aspects of our department. She takes initiative, is detail-oriented, and does an exceptional job. Sandra has been a mentor to new administrative assistants, works collaboratively with staff from all the departments, and provides guidance to others to help all of CISD. She is always ready to step up and take on any new task, but most importantly, Sandra cares about people. She is patient, she is kind, and she takes care of those around her. She loves her dad, her husband, and her dogs, and we are grateful for her each and every day. Next up, we have Patricia Murray from the Finance Department. Patricia has been an asset in various positions during her 10 years with the district, and prior to joining the Finance Department as an Accounts Payable Clerk in 2013, Patricia served at Derrichin. She is highly regarded in the Finance Department because she always has a positive attitude and a smile on her face. She is always open to change, always open to learning new things. She is a hard worker, and she is detailed-oriented, which is a good quality in the world of finance. And we are truly blessed to have Patricia as part of our outstanding team. Next, from the Human Resources Department, we have Sandy Fesmeyer. Sandy Fesmeyer began work in Human Resources Department one year ago as our Employees' Records Specialist. And she joined the team at a time when the department was initiating, she probably would have thought twice if she knew this, one of the biggest projects to date, which is going paperless with our employee records. And Sandy was instrumental in organizing the HR team and the purging of old documents, the returning of official documents to employees, and moving to a totally online system. Sandy comes to work with a smile on her face every day and exemplifies the work ethic and positive attitude of an outstanding Conroe Independent School District employee. And finally, we have, from the Technology Department, Doug Holland. Doug has steadily advanced his skills and has held many positions in the Technology Department. He's been with Conroe Independent School District since 2002, when he began as a Technology Warehouse Driver. In 2003, he took a position as Network Technician. In 2007, he was promoted to work with server team as a Systems IT Specialist. A few years later, he began splitting his time in between the server team and the Security Media Department. In 2014, he accepted a position as the Full-Time Media and Security Supervisor. He is currently handling all the day-to-day activity with all of our security systems, the cameras, and the media within the district.
On behalf of all of the Board of Trustees, just individually and collectively, we want to just tell each and every one of you just how proud we are of you and how appreciative we are of everything that you do to make this district great. You know, the common thread that I heard throughout is just such a positive attitude, just encouragement, and just your optimism in coming to work every day, and I know that just helps everybody, raises up everybody around you, and makes our district better. I looked up, and actually Ambassador comes from the Latin word embactus, which means servant, and you guys are truly examples of servant leadership, of how you serve others. And it's really just inspiring to all of us on the board that we have a team made up of individuals like yourselves that just put others before yourself and truly exemplify servant leadership in your everyday duties, and we're just so thankful and appreciative for all of you.
Ms. Padfrey, has anyone registered to address the board?
No one has signed up.
All right. We're going to take a brief moment, and we're going to go ahead and skip to item 9A if no one else has an objection, and do the naming for the Principal of Grand Oaks High School. Dr. Stockton?
Well, it's my privilege tonight to recommend the first Principal of Grand Oaks High School, the Head Grizzly.
I like it.
And we are excited, and I've had the pleasure of working with this person for the last 20 years.
He's here.
Somebody's assuming something out there. Now, I've had the pleasure of working with Dr. Povich the last 20 years and have seen him do such a great job in every position that he's been in, and I am very confident that he is going to open this school with a roar. So, with that, with that, I'm going to recommend Dr. Chris Povich for the position of Principal of Grand Oaks High School.
Madam President, I move that we elect Chris Povich. Dr. Chris Povich is Principal at the Grand Oaks High School.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Congratulations.
President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, thank you. Being the Big Grizzly, I guess. Can you say that?
Right now, you're the only grizzly.
The only grizzly. Oh, we're working at York. Don't worry. We already got one of our counselors, Carol Ann West, already has our grizzly gear going there for York, so I didn't even know they were done yet, but I guess they are. This is an honor to stand before you tonight. I just completed my 20th year in Conroe ISD. Very blessed to work for such a great district with your support, approval. Excited to be the first Principal at Grand Oaks High School. And I would like to also take this time to thank my loving wife of 24 years, Victoria Waters, my boys Brandon and Joseph, and the rest of the Waters family and friends and coworkers, and the principals are all here tonight. Thank you. That's about as quiet as he's ever been, so. The furniture has made it so far, so we're doing good. Thank you. So, yeah, they're two and nine are my boys back there, and so delighted to live in this district, work for this district, and have my kids go to school here. I look forward to the future of sharing the successes of Grand Oaks community with you, of our students and our staff, and thank you again for your everyday dedicated support of all our students in Conroe ISD. Go Grizzlies.
He just saved the best for last. Is that what he said?
Congratulations.
All right. Item 3, Consent agenda. I've had a request to pull item I. Are there any other items we need to pull? All right. Then if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item I.
And so move, motion approved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, or discussion, all those in favor. All right. Item I, Consider Award of RFP 17-01-01A, Contracted Educational Services, Professional Development and Educational Consulting Services. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, I just asked that this one be pulled because of the size of the contract. I just wanted, as a board, for us to be transparent about that, and nothing unusual. I would just like to hear a little bit more about those services, and then we can vote on it. Thank you.
The majority of these contracted services are special ed services, which is why the amount is so great when we look at it over the years. So, what we're doing is we're qualifying our vendors to make sure that they meet qualifications and are being evaluated by our special ed director, so that we're not just using any vendors. So, she's actually evaluating each of these responses and awarding them based on that criteria, so.
And as I recall, I think there were 37 or eight separate contracts. Is that right?
Correct.
That were really awarding.
Yes, sir.
So, the dollar amount is large, but when you spread it out over 37 different contracts, it's not that big.
Correct. And what we're doing, what we've done is we're, it's open, so we're taking, bringing you guys a new group each month as they're responding, based on the needs, because the needs change. There's, so that's how we're doing that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm sad. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Motion to approve on the table.
A second to motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Motion passes. Item 4A, Except for Information, the Naming Process for the New Conroe ISD Campus. Dr. Stockton?
Okay. It's that time of year again. Dr. Noel, if you'll come and present that item?
Well, good evening, President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. It is that time of year again, and it's an exciting time for us as we look to open another new campus in the near future. And rather than do a presentation as I was going to prepare tonight, I decided what I would just show you is our public-facing website, and it has all the information that I would have shared to you. So, I think it'll be nice for everyone to see the great work that Ms. Blake Lock's doing on our website. So, if you go to the main Conroe ISD webpage, and right there on the very front, you see the big orange box on Public Input, sought for the naming of Flex 18. And just to remind you of where Flex 18 is, this will be a new intermediate school in the Grand Oaks feeder, and as you look here, it's the lower right-hand corner, and back here, near Grand Oaks High School and not too far from the complex that houses York and Cox and Snyder. I'm sure we'll see updated pictures of this facility from Mr. Foster here in just a few minutes, but here's the rendering of the front of that building. And our process begins tonight as we kick this information off, and over the next month, up until August 11th, we will be seeking public input on the naming process. And so, we will ask the public to give us their suggestions and why. As those suggestions flow in through the website, they come to myself and to Ms. Blake Lock, and we'll compile those and make those available to you. We'll ask our principals to share the link to this so that we get that out to all the school community. We'll also ask our local media to help us share this information, and we've had great success in the past when we put this on our social media pages. So, we will put this on our Twitter and Facebook and get it out there, and that tends to really generate a lot of responses. But we'll come back in August and share with you the names that have been submitted, and then we'll return in September as an action item at your pleasure to officially name the school. This is just to show you what this process looks like. It's a nice forum on the webpage. Folks can go in and include their name and email, so that if we have questions, we can go back and ask them for more information, and then we give them an opportunity here to give us their rationale, which is always helpful as they make a suggestion for a name. So, the process begins this evening, and like I said, it'll extend over here the next month, and it's a great opportunity. It's a, as you know, it's a big deal to name a school. It's something that we take very seriously, and we do appreciate the public's input.
Wonderful. All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Noel. Item 4B, Capital Improvements Update. Dr. Stockton?
Mr. Foster, would you come present that item? I know you've had a busy summer, so please update us.
President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure to update you on our capital improvements that we have underway throughout the district. I'm going to start with the Network Operations Center. The project is on its current schedule, and we're in the middle of the complex transition from the old data center to the new data center. So, that process is moving along well and as expected. Just to kind of show you what it looks like on the outside of the building, where we have the air conditioning equipment and preserving, preservation of one of the trees, nice trees on our site. On the inside, the equipment is starting to populate the racks, so it's starting to look like a live and functioning data center more and more every day. As we're moving out of the old technology area, we're also recovering those offices, so we're moving in behind them to freshen up and reestablish those areas for new staff as we grow as a school district. Our lifecycle project, which is the big project for the summer, starting with Buckaloo Elementary, where we replaced their gym floor, so that floor is complete and looking nice. At Bush Elementary, where we replaced the roof, the roof of that building is essentially complete. There's a few details to wrap up, but they're going to be cleaned up and gone in the next week or so. At Galatas, we're in much of the same position. There's a few details there to clean up and move out, but it is nearing its completion on the roof structure. Inside, we're replacing the gym floor, like we have at a number of our campuses this summer, and we're also working on some carpet in the library at Galatas. College Park, we refinished and restripped the competition gym floor on a normal lifecycle schedule. We're also working on refinishing the tennis court facility for that campus, and that progress is moving along well. At Conroe High School, we are also in the middle of refinishing the tennis courts, and we recently completed the refreshing of the track surface to make our lines more visible and usable for the next several seasons. At Creighton Elementary, where we're replacing the end-of-life parking lot, so you're looking at a photograph of the bus loop where the newly-placed concrete is in place, and in the front of the building where the new front parking lot is in place. We're at a point now where we're down to curbs and sidewalks and islands, so that project is moving along just as we anticipated. At David Elementary, we replaced their gym floor, and it is complete and shiny. At Ford Elementary, we also replaced their gym floor, and it is striped and shiny as well. Haley Elementary, we're replacing the roof on that building. It's approximately halfway done. It is right where we anticipated it being at this time of the summer, so it is moving along well, and it will be nearing completion when the school starts, but not quite complete. The two weeks earlier start of school kind of interrupted our schedule a little bit, but I visited with the contractor today about creating a plan to accommodate open house and start of school so that we're out of their way as much as possible. At Hawk Alternative High School, we made some repairs and refinished the gym floor at that building, so it is fully functional and ready for those students to use for their PE programs. At Oak Ridge High School, we're in the process of refreshing their track, so it is lacking stripes, but it is on schedule and waiting the appropriate time to apply the new paint on the stripes of that track. At Washington Junior High, we refinished the main gym of that campus. It is complete, and it's in its curing time right now, so we'll be able to let students own it again here in the next week or so. At the Woodlands High School, we have recently refinished their tennis courts, so that project is complete and being verified by our design team in the next week or so. Now, Knox Junior High, which is another contract, just to clarify, we're adding the science classroom additions. That project is scheduled to be complete and ready for students in August. It is where we would anticipate it being. It is a tight schedule, but it is currently on schedule. We're installing the casework and the lab equipment now. The classrooms are coming together, the ceiling grid's in. We're working with our maintenance department over the next week or so to close up our ceilings and cover up all the infrastructure, so where everything is complete. We're working on details so that we can start applying the finishes and put the floors and everything else in.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. The roof on the gym at Knox, was that also in the process, whatever became of that?
The roof on the gym at Knox is a separate item, but it is also in process. We discussed some remedies with the roofing manufacturer today, as a matter of fact. So, we're moving that process forward, hopefully to have everything ready before the first open house at Knox, so that we can use the gyms without having any issues with roof Moving on to our fieldhouse, the overall building envelope is essentially done. What we're looking at is the installation of the plaster ceilings for the showers and all the other wet areas that go along with locker room facility. So, it looks funny, but it is right where we would expect it to be at this time of the project. At our transportation facility, the existing building has been added on, so we created more space for our drivers to be during the day in their cycles between their morning and afternoon bus routes. The photograph doesn't capture it, but this morning, they placed the concrete around the front of that building. So, now we're down to small amounts of utility infill in the concrete parking lots, and it is on schedule as we would anticipate it. We've also, as part of this project, expanded the parking area to accommodate the increased volume we're seeing. The concrete is placed, we're just waiting for it to cure, so we can apply the striping to it, and it'll stick the way it's supposed to. Our Safety and Security Project, I have a picture for you. Most of this project is above the ceilings, where you can't see anything. What we have for you today is the vestibule installation for Travis Intermediate. So, this is, obviously, there's a man working on it currently, but this is the vestibule that we're creating around the district to give our reception staff some more security as they entertain and service our clients and our students over the course of the school year. Moving on to Lucille Bradley Elementary School, this project is complete, it's substantially complete. We took possession of it officially on June 28th, so it is currently in a, what we would consider a finished standpoint on the inside, and we've been populating it with furniture. Our purchasing department began delivering the furniture a couple of weeks ago, and it is becoming set up and usable, and will be ready for our staff when they come back to school. At Grand Oaks High School, the project is proceeding as we would anticipate. It is scheduled to open in August of 2018, so you can see the main focus is now drawing in the perimeter of the building. You can see the brickwork is just starting to become more visible as you drive by it on the Grand Parkway. It is starting to take its personality on. The athletic venues are also one of the major scopes of work that's going on. So, you're seeing the bleachers, the lightstands, the other things that make the baseball, softball, football, and the other athletic venues that we've got. On the back end of the building, on the fine arts section, where we've got the gyms and the other athletics areas, we're starting to see all the tall work on the interior start to take place. At Flex 18, this is what Dr. Noel promised you I'd show you some pictures of. This building is on schedule, scheduled to open in August, at the same time Grand Oaks opens. As you can see, we're making great progress. We consider this project still in the dirt. We go, we begin to go vertical in August. Structural steel and those elements that take it out of the ground vertical start arriving on the first of August, and they'll start going up almost immediately upon arriving on site. Conroe High School, this is addition renovation project across the street, where our main focus is creating a traffic flow through the campus to allow the expansion of the building, which will allow us to renovate the mechanical and electrical systems in the main campus. So, the process here is to create a bus loop around the new building, and I'm happy to report it is on schedule. We've been working side by side with the city, and they've been very helpful in inspections and working with us to make sure we get what we need done correctly. What you're looking at here is the actual preparation for the subgrade before we put in the asphalt roadway around the building, so it is actually moving along very well. Alongside of that, we're putting in the infrastructure for the new building and future expansions and to help us renovate the main mechanical systems of the building. You're looking at the piping infrastructure, which is underground, from this next spot, which is the central plant, to create a more energy-efficient mechanical system for that building. We're combining in one location the chillers and the boilers and the pumps and everything that will supply the heating and cooling for that campus in one location, and all those pipes that we've just shown you are all headed back to this particular area. And that is our update.
Wonderful.
Awesome.
Thank you. Item 5A, Financial Reports.
Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. It is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements for the district for the month of June. These statements will include our general fund, our debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll look at this evening is our balance sheet. Our balance sheet includes our assets, our liabilities, and our fund balances. Each month, we like to look at our cash and investments. In concentrating here on the general fund, you see we have cash in hand of $500, bank deposits of $322,000, investments in estate pools of $80 million, our short-term investments, less than one year, $74 million, our investments with TCG Investment Advisors, $51 million, for a total cash and investments of $206 million. Then always, we like to track our property tax collection, and as you can see, we're ahead of where we were last year, so we're very confident we're going to reach 100% collections. The next statement we'll look at this evening is the income statement. It includes our revenues and expenditures in fund balance. The revenues are broken down into three categories. There are local and intermediate sources, state program revenues, and federal program revenues. Looking at the detail of our local and intermediate sources, you can see that property taxes is the largest generator of revenues in the general fund and debt service fund, food sales and child nutrition, and premium contributions and self-funded insurance. We can also look at our expenditures by major category for each one of the funds. Our fund balance projection for the general fund, no change from last month, an increase of about $8.9 million. Same for debt service, we're projecting an increase of about $4.6, that's the same as last month. And child nutrition, an increase of about $692,000. Good news on self-funded insurance, we got back on track in June. Our total revenues are $3.77 million and expenses of $3.67 million, giving us revenues over expenses of $102,000, so a good month. Total for the year, we have total revenues of $37.6 million, total expenses of $34.3 million, leaving us revenues over expenses of about $3.3 million, so the fund looks like it's performing very well. Got one more month for the summer, or two more months, so we're hoping, we're hoping. Got one more month for the summer, or two more months, so we're hoping. Participation at the wellness centers for the month of June, we had 453 visits, so good there. Our North County facility opened, we had roughly 20 to 25 visits there, so it's starting to get going, so we're excited about that. Just on some other news, just for your information, our contract with Memorial Hermann includes performance clauses based on the ACO portion of our health plan. And based on our claims for last year, they did not meet the performance targets. So we will be receiving a rebate from Memorial Hermann of about $1 million for that performance. So good news on that front.
So you have an over revenue, over expenses of $4 million, not including next month, next two months?
Yes, sir.
How much did we fund that last year? How much was it that we funded the self-funded insurance piece? I know we...
Oh, how much did we transfer? It was roughly $2.5 million, if I'm not mistaken.
But Mr. Rice, is it not true that claims are trailing? So the negative 152 month, May, could actually be claims from spring break?
Correct.
And summer claims, which naturally gravitate towards the holidays for their surgeries and like, and so we've got, you know, May, June, and July maybe showing up in September and October, so we're not out...
Probably about a three-month lag on that, on those claims, yeah.
It's not quite as big as it looks possibly.
Correct.
Let's put it that way.
Correct.
It's definitely better than it has been in the past.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Our investments for the month of June, we had a par value of $429 million. Our pools were yielding about 1.1%. Our short-term investments, once again, less than one year, was 1.28%. Our investments with TCG Investment Advisors, 1.21%. Our combined portfolio is 1.14%, and our benchmark, which is the 90-day T-bill, was just over 1%. That's okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have one quick question, Mr. Rice. The pools, the investment earnings on the pools, how much have you seen that rise, say, in the last six months? It's been significant.
Oh, significant. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Forty basis points or?
More.
More than that?
Probably 75 basis points.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been considerable.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. And Item 8A, Accept Information on Board Policy Manual Update 108.
Mrs. Galatas, please.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. This is Bush, members of the Board. This is a really, really dull policy manual update. I struggle to try to find something clever or funny to say about it, but it's just boring. As you can see, it's, there's not a lot of substance needed, changes, there's terminology changes to align with administrative rules. Those are the, kind of the E-series changes. There's a clarification to our credit by exam that the Board does have to approve the examinations that are given for that. They're deleting some old language from old laws that are no longer applicable, changes to campus charters, we don't have one, so I doubt you paid a whole lot of attention to that. We did make some changes to DH. I would love to say that was in anticipation of new law that was passed, it just kind of turns out it was fortuitous. We had employees that got into trouble outside of work report to their supervisors if that had happened. We are pulling that back and having them report to HR instead, because we had a little concern about the information making it to HR. Turns out that there's a new state law that's all-encompassing, but it requires principals within seven days to tell the superintendent of any criminal activity engaged, and it kind of saves them from having to worry about that, because people should be going directly to HR. And then finally, the last policy, GKB, they just changed the name so that it would be a standard policy, so that we don't have to pay extra for it anymore, so it was very kind of them. And so that is your update 108, and you'll be asked to adopt these in August.
Wonderful. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Thank you very much. Time is now 6:33.